Let's come to order. Welcome to our first budget meeting of two thousand and twelve. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight. I see Commissioner Stevens is in the audience. I'm assuming to tell us that there's no problem this year, spend all we want. Am I right on that?
Hopefully.
We appreciate you taking the time to come out and other guests, welcome. Mr. Gill, take it away.
Okay, you have three separate documents in front of you. We'll work off the first one in particular, and then you can reference the second one. The second one ultimately is the object code summary that we always present, shows you what we had this year with respect to positions and other expenditures versus what we'll have next year. Now let's look at that first document that says general purpose school budget summary. And we'll kind of give you a description of where we were this year versus where we need to be next year. And again, it's... We're stymied with respect to doing some things that we'd like to do because, as you just asked, Mr. Stevens, money's always an issue and funding the district's always an issue. This year, for example, we're at two hundred and sixty-seven million. Next year, we'll be asking for two hundred and eighty-one million, and it's driven almost exclusively by growth and medical issues, some other benefits. But anyway, let's take them line by line and we'll arrive at that conclusion. First of all, this year, as part of that two hundred and sixty-seven I mentioned, two hundred and sixty-seven million, we had a hundred and sixty-one million, nine hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars. It was for staffing. This year, we'll need a hundred and sixty-nine million, eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. A large part of that'll be for growth, but there's also about as many as fifteen positions that as a result has gone to the American Diploma Project that we'll have to add. We have a need, and Mr. Odom, I've been working on it, Ms. Burns, we have a need for eleven additional math teachers because there's now four units of math required. We have four additional science positions because you still have to have three science credits, but you have to have physical science and chemistry or two of those three. So we had to add four chemistry teachers and also the certification change to just make that doable. Also, the state changes, I'll show you in a minute, the ESL per pupil teacher ratio of forty-five to forty, and that required an increase as well. So we'll be asking for roughly eight million more dollars for staffing. Benefits went up just a little, almost exclusively because of added positions. The big increase, as you see, was medical insurance. We'll be asking for thirty-two million, one hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars for an increase of three, over three and a half million dollars for our contribution in insurance. Now, there's potential that could be even more, and it's potentially could be less. There's some ongoing discussion. Paul, you went to meeting today, didn't you?
Yes, sir. Insurance committee did. A recommendation was made to add an option, which will be a copay option, and we'll give you all that information in a letter back when we have all the statistics, and then to raise the option two premium by twenty percent in order to meet the needs of the benefits plan in its entirety for our system.
Well, if that all comes to fruition, would that have an impact on our three and a half million anticipated?
That three and a half million that Jeff calculated, that should come very close to covering that.
Yeah.
That's...
I had a discussion with the county finance director just before this meeting, and it's still kind of up in the air on some of the ramifications of some of this, but we'll be...
Well, you know, the sad thing, we talk about it here a lot, is that that's obviously needed. Our people need good insurance. Everyone does, but none of that really goes into the classroom. You know, it's just, but that's a big chunk of the increase, roughly what, twenty-five percent, twenty-three percent, something like that. Okay. Anyway, other expenditures, we'll, there's, last year, we were at forty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand. This year, we'll need about one point four million more. That's for things like six or seven, how many buses we got in there? Eight?
Right now, we have nine, one of them being special ed.
Okay. We got nine buses, you know, utilities, everything's part of that money. Equipment stayed, actually was forty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars less. We're talking about computers, office furniture, stuff like that. Debt service, our contribution went down thirty-two hundred dollars because of just paying less interest.
Less than interest.
Yeah. So last year, our budget was, ended up after we amended some money, to be two hundred and sixty-seven million, one hundred and two thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars. This year, as of this sitting, and this could change some, but not much, two hundred and eighty-one million, twenty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars for a net increase of just under fourteen million dollars. All right, now, you see below, in blue, we've reflected positions. This year, we had three thousand, seven hundred and forty-four positions that came out of GP, and next year, we'll go to three thousand, eight hundred and twelve positions. We actually obviously have more positions. Some of them are funded through the cafeteria fund, some of them through federal funds, but those are all attached to GP. Jeff shows below the, this year's budget in advance of that three hundred or so thousand dollars special ed money that was amended into the final budget. All right, now, down below, expenditures. Now, the state is requesting, requiring...
Acquiring.
Yeah. Two and a half percent state raise on state teacher salaries. Now, if we don't match that out of local money, which is what we're not proposing to do right now because we don't think there's enough local money to do that, that would be the equivalent of two point zero seven seven percent overall raise for the teachers, which is equals, if you factor in their step raises along with the two point zero seven seven raise, that's an additional four point seven million dollars, actually four million, seven hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars. The raise itself would be two million, eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand, so we have step raises either way. All right, now, we know that the board historically has wanted to match whatever the teachers got and give the same thing to classified, so we went ahead and put that in there. That'll all be, pretty much all local on it, Jeff.
Yes, sir. When we get the BEP estimates, there may be some state money, but we don't have any idea.
Yeah, it won't be, it won't be a whole lot. So step raises were three hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars a gift. That's pursuant to what we've always done. And to give them the two point zero seven raise, that's five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars out of local, total nine hundred and two thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars. Now, we also have in the line below, we've totaled all those raises up, plus there are some level raises that we'll talk about just in a minute for about fifteen or sixteen employees that are the equivalent of thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars. Anything on that page?
Questions or comments?
Would you...
I'm sorry.
Now, what, what sort of enrollment growth have you built?
We factored it on two and a half percent, about a thousand kids.
Level raises, is that going to a different supervisory position?
Say again, I don't...
The level raises, are those...
Yeah, there's, we've got, if you could hold off just a minute, I'll go over it in just a second. It'd be easier if I think to follow this.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Two and a half percent growth rate is what you figured on. Yes.
Do we have any idea when we might hear back from the insurance committee, how far out those decisions are and potential impact on that insurance line?
Yeah.
The commission, insurance committee recommendation will go to the budget committee next Thursday night and to the full commission the week after that, assuming the budget sends it forward. It just, that twenty percent increase on option two, that is what we are trending. We don't have a lot of latitude. And our history was a little off. Last year, the insurance director, the folks, we, let's see if our trend improves, it has deteriorated. We don't have a lot of latitude.
But that will be in advance of our final decisions on this, right?
Yes.
So we'll be able to weigh that in?
Yes, sir.
Right.
Okay, second page. We talked about having to add positions, and again, we'll have to, we'll need to add eleven additional math teachers at the high school. Again, it's driven by that American Diploma Project. Four additional chemistry teachers, and I think I explained, are there any questions on the math or chemistry positions? Now, the state has lowered the ratio for ESL kids. At one time, it was forty-five to one, now it's dropped to forty to one. That's resulted in us needing, having to budget for four point five more positions for next year. Also, at schools with higher free reduced meals, we're wanting to add three additional elementary intervention coaches. We've had a lot, gotten a lot of mileage out of them, wouldn't you say, Mr. Odom? And then we've included thirty-one point eight positions for growth to accommodate that two and a half percent growth that we anticipate. So that's fifty-four point three positions that we budgeted right there. And that was, that's two point, almost two point two million dollars worth of regular teachers, much of which is just to meet state mandate. Then, special ed teachers, we've got five sped growth positions. We're moving three behavior, autism specialist, behavior specialist and autism specialist compliance liaison into IDA funding, so we're taking that out of local for a year. It'll, it'll be back. Riverdale High School sped math teacher, special ed teachers. I might say that if you talk to the principals, they're always wanting more special ed help. But we're really hamstrung with respect to being able to fund them, so we do, we do the best we can. You know, if we had, it's been pretty common over the years that people kind of, at the commission level, again, I've always been appreciative of what they've done, but it's often said that we're living proof that you can get a lot of good results on a low budget. Well, there's some truth to that, but you could also do incredible things if you had another twenty or thirty million dollars or forty, like, like some of the higher funded systems got with money. You could give those sped teachers, you could give those intervention coaches, you could, you know, you could start online coursework, you could do all sorts of things, but we're just hamstrung with respect to being able to do it. We're also moving three other, three other positions into the IDEA money. That's reflected in the blue line. We're not... We've got some bulk ed teachers, but CMS is covered by vacancy, other growth or vacant positions. Let's see. We have to add three guidance counselors, one for five oh four issues, two for partial year for Stewart Creek High School. We knew that was coming, but again, that's partial. Also, the next is basically point two position for a portion of safety test position in title two, may have to move to GPS. Other words, we're picking up some money there. Our title two funding is about to be cut pretty dramatically. Next, instructional facilitator in title two will probably have to use, move to GPS. And if you recall, the instructional facilitators, the people that work with the first, second year teachers primarily, or someone else at a principal request, needs help or observed. We're moving two psychologists into the IDEA funds. We've got three additional Stewart's Creek High School partial year positions there, the principal and two assistants. All that totaled two million, three hundred and nine thousand. That gets us to two million, three hundred and nine thousand for new positions. Bottom two lines are, again, when you add new positions, you pay FICA, Medicare, retirement for the new certified people, three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. Also, insurance for the new certified staff, four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. So that chews up close to a million. So, three million, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars for new certified staff with benefits. Chewed up a chunk of change.
Questions on that page or comments?
What's a five oh four issue?
We've got a lot of five oh fours in schools. Paul, you want to speak to it?
The changes, the federal changes in AD and five oh four guidelines, our caseload for five oh four activity has more than tripled in this system over the past three years, and we have currently two student services staff who address all of those issues in the school at all forty-five schools. So it's near to impossible for them to spread out as far as they need to, to address these in the schools with the school staff.
Understood. Translate for me one more time, though. Five oh four, what is that issue?
Students, students who qualify under five oh four, American Disabilities Act.
Got it.
Okay. So federal guidelines, simple lay on, any kind of inconsistency in child's physical, you know, you have to state, you have to address in classrooms, written reports planned, so.
Wait.
At one time, I knew all the different titles, just so many of them now, I forget what they are. Title two, again, is...
Title two is staff development.
Okay, all right, thanks. We're full of numbers and acronyms.
Eric. The three elementary intervention positions, will they float at all, or do you expect them to be at specific locations?
We assign them specific locations, each to each school, yeah. They're a pretty, pretty heavy workload at the school. You started with how many, Mr. Odom? You remember? Six or seven?
Six, I believe it was.
Yeah. And we expanded. Again, the principals rave about it, and we, we can really tie that to test score results as well, so. All right, if you'll flip the page, next page, classified staffing increase. You know, we've really tried to hold off on, on increasing any staffing and make sure we get our budget. At the same time, we want to make sure we don't have to cut positions, so we'll be monitoring non-renewals and all those kind of deals. As Mr. Holliday said, at some point, we'll really know what we're finally going to ask for and what we're finally going to get. We're taking two point nine EA positions and transferring it, wait a minute, hold it. Okay, we've got five unfilled elementary intervention EA positions were cut to cover some of the teacher costs, so we are able to eliminate some money there. We will need... You want to explain that a little better, Jeff?
Last year, we had to put, had to put some of these elementary intervention positions in because of maintenance of the effort with title one. So, and we've gotten good results from that. Because our growth was off, we didn't know if we would get any growth BEP revenue. I, I was, the statute does not require them to pump below two percent. So, we held off on a few positions. That's one of the groups we held off on because we weren't sure if we'd have growth money. They were in the budget, we just didn't fill them, and after talking to Mr. Gill and Mr. Odom, thought this would be a good way to help us put the teachers, at least, in these other schools.
All right. So we've got five point one, eight new EAs to be assigned where needed. Obviously, EAs go primarily in the K three, three classroom, primarily to assist with teachers. We were at sixty to one. Did we move that to eighty to one, four classrooms one? We still got it three to one. You remember? It's still up to four to one. We did that as a result a few years ago so that we wouldn't have to cut positions, so we had to increase that. That's kind of, that's sad. Wish we didn't have to do that. Two point three EAs, and that will go, three existing school vocational secretaries will be moved to Carl Perkins Federal Project to GP, where funding is being cut back on Carl Perkins. Next, there's one ESL clerk, student reporting used in funding formula will be taken from ESL. Next, there's two tenths of a position for the balance of existing vocational secretary to be moved from Carl Perkins Federal Project. We moved her to twelve months. Next, partial year for Stewart's Creek Secretary Bookkeeper Attendance, partial year for Stewart's Creek Custodial Staff. So the new classified staff, the four benefits was two hundred and three thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars. Also, if you factor in FICA and insurance, that brings it to two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seventeen dollars. So obviously, we're not increasing those positions by too many. So new staff certified and classified with benefits will be three point four, five million dollars more than it was this year.
Discussing. Okay, proceed.
And last, if I, if I could say one thing on that page, the partial year for the Stewart's Creek High School Secretary Bookkeeper and all, I showed it as one point oh two full-time equivalent positions. We had a vacant position in the flow between central magnet and central middle that I eliminated. So, on my detail sheet, it doesn't show that we're adding a position, but it's inconsistent in the way I'm showing it. I just wanted to mention that.
All right. Appreciate you playing that up for us. Jeff, Jeff knows his stuff.
He does. I was going to ask about that.
Okay. Level, we're proposing some pay raises for some folks that, let me get to him in just a second. The secretary, secretary to the Director of Instruction, proposal, we just increased the level from a four to a four point five. That's based on experience, year of service, et cetera. That's eighteen hundred and twenty-six dollars. There are four maintenance workers that, there are others that we felt like deserved, but we, we settled on four of those workers going from a level five to a level six. Their skills would indicate that was appropriate. That averaged four thousand, ninety-six dollars per person, got them to sixteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars. So those GPS total level raises were eighteen thousand, two hundred and nine dollars. Also, the cafeteria fund accounting clerk from a four point five to a five, and that would be sixteen hundred and forty-eight dollars. Now, down below, in trying to promote some consistency on establishing a uniform index for this group of fourteen, it would propose raises to actually fifteen below. They don't necessarily tie to this index, but we, we've never really had an index that regulated exactly what people would get coming in and when we transferred positions. So, for example, somebody starts out at forty thousand dollars, they come in, they've got six, six to nine years experience, you multiply that times one hundred and ten, you get their salary. So we think that's probably a prudent thing to do. Now, down below are these, again, these raises that we're proposing. First one is executive administrative assistant, twenty-five hundred dollars, based on all the year's service and the increased amount of work that's been required. Material center supervisor, it would be a sixty one dollar raise based on, we talked about what it was, Jeff, I don't remember. Staff accountant, a two thousand dollar, the accounting supervisor, a three thousand dollar raise, purchasing agent, two thousand, director of maintenance, Mr. Curly's position, three thousand, and the maintenance form with twenty-nine years experience, two thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars, and the transportation supervisor, two thousand dollars. And finally, the career, the cafeteria fund director, forty-two hundred dollars. And we discussed those, Jeff and I feel strongly that they're all warranted based on their performance or years of experience, and we recommend that you do that. I think all that totaled up to thirty-four thousand dollars.
Questions on that? Okay.
Again, the second part, that second document was something for you to just compare and contrast what we've done in the past versus where we are now. As you see, there, it's pretty, very few changes across there, but it will give you a pretty good idea of how much we're spending, for example, for guidance personnel, school psychs, librarians, social workers, et cetera. All this is kind of preliminary stuff for you guys to chew on, and then when we set up our second meeting, I'm sure you'll have, had time to study this and probably propose new questions.
I want to ask, since we're here on this page, the six, I think halftime positions that were allotted for evaluations, where are they showing here?
They're not.
Okay.
Actually, what happened, and, and, you know, we'd hope to get the word out because we're very appreciative of the job those folks did. They slashed, as I said yesterday, at the, at the Teacher of the Year reception, they slashed from six to four observations on teachers to four to two, which makes it more doable for the, for the administrative team to, and, and I think the principals appreciated the job they did, but I also think that they, they also benefit from seeing their teachers themselves. But now, what we have done, there are two or three or four schools that were really a little bit understaffed with respect to having assistant principals, so we've taken that money, and there'll probably be some part-time assistant principals assigned to some of the schools to help with that workload. I can't tell you right now which schools. I could tell you if I could get my hands on our list, but that's kind of where we are with that. And if you folks are watching out there or you're within earshot, thanks for the good job you did. Those evaluators did a really good job for us. But Paul, I think in our discussion, we knew, they knew that it was, that possibility was here.
Yeah. Mr. Gill, if, on the detailed page in Office of Principals, those positions didn't show up right, I've got something I've got to fix. So...
I guess that'd be the question. I, I don't, I understand it not being, that was going to be my question. Wouldn't be as likely to need them this next year, but I don't, I don't see that those three positions are posted here as not needed for next year.
Okay. So you didn't take them out of this part of...
I, I, I was hoping to wait until...
Oh, yeah, we talked about that, yes. We'd hoping, we were hoping to notify them in lieu of just them hearing it the way they heard it, I guess, or where they'll read it. But anyway, please, Malane, if you're writing this, tell them we love them.
We call them on your way home.
Well, I don't have any of their mobiles, I'm sorry.
Other discussion. This appears to be a very lean budget.
I mean, it's just that we're offering the same services as we have. We're just taking on insurance, taking on growth, you know, administering the state required teacher raises, matching the classified, and, you know, giving some thirty-four thousand dollar worth of raises to people that deserved it very much.
And our increase, our total increase right now is about thirteen point nine million. Our total increase last year was about thirteen point seven million.
Yeah, it's a good point.
And we have major insurance increases.
That's a good point.
So...
Okay, further questions or discussion?
Dr. Burns, let me just, I just jotted down several positions.
Sure.
That if we look at schools ten years ago, fifteen years ago, for sure, maybe not that far back, that are just absolute necessities in schools now, a school nurse, it used to be the teacher put the Band-Aid on it. Now, we're not allowed to do those kind of things. That's got to be there. Graduation coaches are very valuable, those positions that are there. ELL was something that we didn't deal with years ago. EAs, extremely valuable, probably as much bang for a buck there as we can get in anything. Credit recovery coaches, those need to be certified in probably full-time positions. We need to move in that direction. You mentioned the fourth unit of math and so forth. I, I think for those that don't understand, the school staffing is just totally different than it was.
Yeah.
Just ten years back, certainly thirty years back when I first started, well, a couple of years back from that, I first started teaching.
Well, those are all very good points, and the, the dynamics of education's changed so much with all the accountability, you know, like you mentioned, graduation coaches, and how they track down students and make sure they don't fall behind. We talked about these intervention coaches, DEA's, how they work one-on-one with kids, that provide such a good service. I mean, it goes on and on and on. The needs outside of just a classroom teacher to make sure that we're successful, and the consequences are... The needs outside of just a classroom teacher to make sure that we're successful, and the consequences are so severe if we don't cut it. You know, I mean, we know what they are, with respect to state coming in, taking over, you know, potentially labeling us a bad district, so, you know, you're right, Mr. Tagg, it's changed dramatically over the years. I'm proud to say, I think we've responded pretty well with what we have, you know, to intervene on struggling learners' part and also enrichment opportunities.
Mr. Gill, I remember over ten years ago, we slashed EAs to meet the, a budget crisis, and our, our scores just pretty much tanked, and then, when the EAs came back, our scores began to rise again, so all of these individuals were critical.
That's happened to Mr. Watson, I remember he had cut a lot of positions. One of the things Jeff and I have tried to do is to make sure we didn't have to cut positions and the whole team down here, you know, we, our solution had to be increase. Instead of offering an EA per three teachers, we went to an EA for four teachers. You know, we didn't, when we had non-renewals, we didn't cut positions, we did a lot of good things to save people's jobs, I'm pretty proud of that.
And we, some vacant positions, we did not fill.
Right, absolutely.
To help get through this period.
But you're right, in connection with what you're saying, those EAs are valuable, I know that was your point.
Paul.
Question about the math and the science teachers. I look at that, and I'm thinking, we're not the only ones going to be after these folks. What is our supply and what will left?
That's the reason we got them posted and got them out there early. We'll be, we'll be hitting them hard with trying, the principals ask, what? We started, Mr. Odom and Ms. Barnes and I started about a month and a half ago, requesting needs, and every one of them were sending in their math needs, and I, we went ahead and posted them then. I said, go ahead and hire these people now, so we can get some.
Can you contract, we did, we're doing some, contracts, we're trying a lot.
Right. Paul, what's the status on math applicants?
We actually have a fairly good-sized number of math applicants, because we put it out there so early and because we just went to the National Recruitment Fair and had contact with those people, we had generated a lot of interest in our system, and we've already have written, I think, four contracts for math teachers as of this week. Because principals jump on it very quickly, as soon as they post it, they interview it, and they make recommendations.
Our job fair?
Our job fair is scheduled for May the twelfth, that'll learn high schools end this year.
And will be able to?
Yes, sir, and we'll continue to recruit at that point. I'm sure we'll have, you know, we'll continue to have vacancies, we have those, we haven't posted yet, presidencies, retirements, but we jumped out there early on math and science.
What about, there's a shortage of chemistry teachers too, isn't there?
Chemistry and physics are always hard. We've, we've involved ourselves in an online recruitment fair that's out of New York that's nationwide, including impact involved in that this week. And they're recruiting in Ohio, actually today, because that's a real good source of strong teachers for us. We've identified, so we jump out there where we can.
How is the estimated number of teachers needed in the state of math and chemistry outside?
I hesitate to even answer that question, but I have heard it's going to be a very, very large issue because of the number of retirements that they're anticipating.
That's why I was.
Wouldn't part, I'm sorry, go ahead, Tom.
Roughly one and a half of going into senior class, about half of senior class typically do not take the full class. Next year was American Diploma Project, so another half, if you ask most principals, you're looking at another two hundred and a half student classes next year, and that sort of thing, it's a big depending on, but their senior class might be, we can track that relatively well from prior years, what percentage taken. That's how we hang up with the numbers.
Yeah. Have some of the states that we're competing with for these teachers, have they moved to differential pay? I mean, I know that's been a controversial issue, but.
What are you saying? Nothing called strategic compensation day plans, and I've only seen one from Box County, and it's kind of interesting, but it's a, it's a bonus paid to every teacher in the system that meets certain criteria, and then, if they're in a hard to staff or high in this school, the bonus might be a little bit heavier. But I haven't seen that one in any group that I'm associated with.
I mean, in Tennessee, I think that was, the overall plan was withdrawn, wasn't it, for this year, but I wonder if other states are, are moving forward with that? Don't know. We don't know, that's not really the source of the problem, that they're going to other states, it's just that the overall demand is so high.
I think so, yeah.
I thought I remembered one year doing this, that, that we only had one physics teacher that graduated in the whole state. I don't remember it. Yeah, that's amazing.
That was in education.
Yes, sir. Right, right. Yes, sir.
Okay, other discussion. Joyce, do we have a, our second budget meeting scheduled yet, or I can't recall if it?
No, we picked a tentative date, but it hasn't been advertised.
Do we have our joint meeting set with?
Yes.
Health Ed Commission, what's the date on that?
I've, I've got that here.
I think what we'll do, we'll have to have at least one more budget meeting, and then, we'll decide at that point if we need another one or not. We might not, I don't see a whole lot of shifting around that we can really do compared to some past years when we were a little more ambitious. May twenty-second?
It's the joint meeting.
Okay. So, sometime between now and then, sometime in, what, Joyce will figure it out, there's a lot of dates to work around now in terms of when we can do that, that second budget meeting, but obviously, we'll let you know as soon as we can. I don't, you're not ready to do that tonight, I don't think, are you, Joyce?
No.
If I, the non-labor, non-benefit items, we will be closing March out, obviously, Monday, Tuesday. I will get into amending our current year in those items and refining these numbers based on where we're coming in this year. I've, I've done minimal work. Increases I knew we had, there'll be some tweaking.
Well, what kind of impact will that have on next year's budget?
My hope is minor.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's really just, I put in the, the big items I knew we had in that one point four million, I'm hoping it'll just be tweaking.
Okay. Jeff, I know you prefer to wait as long as possible to get further information.
I have better numbers. If I let another month hit, the, when Metro moved to wanting theirs in January, you're guessing on so many items.
Right.
Every month, and I can give a better number.
Okay. Well, so stay tuned, we'll let you know what we come up with on.
I'll probably have it worked out tomorrow.
Okay. So, between now and whatever date that is, study these documents, and come ready to ask your questions or make your comments next time. Eric?
Two things. I remember last year that, just like Jeff was saying with the, as the months go by, the numbers get more accurate. As the months go by, the estimates on revenue get more accurate. How confident are we in the revenue estimates right now?
I haven't even put any together.
And the second thing is?
That's about revenue estimates.
Step raises. Tell me again, step raises are, they're guided by, by, by law for certified?
By the salary schedules.
By salary schedules.
The salary schedules, in the case of teachers, there's a state, and then, we have a local, a smaller local, much smaller local amount on top of that. For most of the classified positions, there is a salary schedule, it's like you would get a raise after your fourth. Or, but also, you're doing teachers, there are also, on that salary schedule, it ties to, if you get a higher degree.
The way you've laid out the years of experience on the fifteen salary classified staff on that page, that's really, really helpful. Is it possible that we could get that kind of breakdown on how that step raises happens for certified and classified there, to be able to understand that?
Yeah, we can do that.
Yes.
Okay, other discussion. Mr. Gill and Ms. Sandvik, anything else?
Sure.
Well, thank you all both for all your work on this document. I know it's, it's a long, hard process, and we'll be taking a look at it. And until our next time, we are adjourned.